Members in line with our guidance on the use of social media, I am happy for anyone attending today's meeting, including members of the council, to use social media, provided that this does not disturb the business of the others. Thank you. Item two, minutes on page nine of the agenda, personal interests or prejudicial interests that members wish to make at this point. Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fairly obviously I-
Chairman, I can confirm that Becky Rush was elected as county councillor for the Warringham division.
Thank you, and the election of Becky Rush, who has joined the Conservative group, means that there is no change to the current scheme of proportionality. Moving on to item five, my announcements, you will find my announcements in the book, no need to elaborate unless you wish to on the embroidery one. Item six, main item of today, revenue and capital budget 2019-20 to 2023-24. Members, the papers for this item are included in the main agenda from page 23. Amendments to this report have been published in the supplementary agenda for item six and include replacements for annexes one and two. And members, please note that annex A of the first supplementary report replaces annex one and annex B replaces annex two. Members should also note that the recommendations before you are the supplementary agenda on pages six and seven, numbered one to eighteen inclusive, and replace those set out in the council agenda in the Green Book. Another supplementary agenda was sent out yesterday with a further revision, and this further amended recommendations two and three and introduced a new recommendation nineteen. I intend to take the recommendations as one recorded vote, and any member who is not entitled to vote on this item should withdraw. The arrangements for the debate on the budget are slightly different today for those of our usual debates, as set out in standing orders eighteen K and L. So, I now call the leader to present his report.
Mr. Chairman and members, let me begin by thanking the great many residents and partners who took the time to respond to the council's consultation and engagement exercise. Over twenty-eight thousand responses were received on the five service areas that were consulted on, whilst of course there was a mixture of views, we have listened very carefully to the feedback. That's why Cabinet last week removed the proposal to close four community recycling centres, pending a thorough review of our waste and recycling services. This will allow us to pick up the details in the government's recent waste strategy, which was only released after we had begun the consultations. I am grateful to Dr. Povey, who has agreed to chair a cross-party working group to look at all of the options. However, there can be no doubt that these remain extremely challenging times. The impact of austerity has meant the local government has lost sixty per cent of its funding since 2010, and this council has had to use over eighty million of its reserves since 2014 to supplement its revenue budget. Mr. Chairman, in truth, we have not done enough in the past to ensure our finances are sustainable, and this is now a major piece of work. But I am determined that we will put this council's finances on a solid footing as quickly as possible. This financial year, we will have delivered a hundred and six million of savings as our transformation programmes start to take shape, and we will have not had to rely on our very limited reserves to achieve a balanced budget. But given the pressures the county faces and the financial challenges that need addressing, we are left with no choice but to recommend an increase in council tax by two point nine nine per cent for the municipal year 2019-20. It gives neither me nor indeed any of us any pleasure in making this recommendation, particularly as Surrey residents pay some of the highest council tax in the country. But it is my genuine hope that we will get to a position in the future where we can limit further increases. Mr. Chairman, I read the funding settlement with interest. Having worked so closely and productively with our district and borough partners over the past twelve months to make a success of the business rate retention pilots, and indeed to promote economic growth, we were disappointed that Surrey was not chosen as one of the authorities to pilot the scheme in year two. However, I was pleased that common sense prevailed in relation to the elimination of negative revenue support grant, which on any view would have been unfair and inequitable. Mr. Chairman, none of us in this chamber want to see a reduction in services, but there can be no doubt that we need to radically redesign the way in which we deliver them. Whilst we now have a strategy in place that will ensure the council has a sustainable financial plan, the main catalyst for the consultations was not financial, but to provide better outcomes, particularly within children's services, where we are behind the curve compared to neighbouring authorities. I know there has been widespread concern about the closure of children's centres, but in truth, but the truth is that the proposals approved by Cabinet last week will help us to better target support to the most vulnerable and the most in need. Research has told us that many of the most vulnerable in our communities do not currently use children's services, sorry, children's centres, so our proposals will allow us to take the service to them and visit people in their homes. There are many authorities who have implemented a very similar structure to their children's services, with extremely positive results for children and families. To that extent, we are following an established path, and we will need to work closely with our partners to make sure no one is left behind. Looking forward, Mr. Chairman, there will be a second round of consultations later in the year. These will focus on how we can improve the way in which we deliver our library and bus services. It is vital that we look at and understand what alternative proposals in each place would look like on a case-by-case basis. That is why we have already started to engage with our district and borough partners, as there cannot and should never be a one-size-fits-all approach to how our services are delivered. And it is vital that as many services as possible are delivered in partnership. This will not only ensure we provide residents with value for money, but also that we provide more efficient and seamless services to the people of Surrey. There are already a number of examples, such as the ten-year plan for health and wellbeing in Surrey, which we shall shortly publish, setting out how we can work together with our local communities to transform outcomes across Surrey. This is largely thanks to the unprecedented levels of collaboration. The integrated approach to delivering a youth strategy with Woking Borough Council, as agreed through the Woking Joint Committee, which aims to improve young people's emotional wellbeing and mental health, while supporting the transmission from adolescence to adulthood. And finally, another example is the Shapeboard, which has come together with a number of public authorities to think more creatively about publicly owned assets across the county. Mr. Chairman, in my eight weeks as leader, I have been humbled by numerous messages of support and encouragement. I've enjoyed getting out and meeting residents, staff, partners, MPs and even opposition groups. And one thing is absolutely clear: we all have the welfare of Surrey residents at heart. I strongly encourage all of us as elected members to make residents aware of the outcome of the first phase of consultations and promote the second phase when it begins. Each of us has a unique place at the heart of our communities, and your voice will be vital as we go through a period of significant change. But with that voice comes a responsibility to represent the authority within those communities. Some double haters amongst us face district and borough elections in May, and many of us will be out on the doorstep supporting colleagues over the next ninety days. This provides an excellent opportunity to listen to residents' concerns and their ideas for how services can be delivered. It also provides an opportunity for us to inform them about the work we have already started to improve services for those most in need of our support, and to look for solutions that will enhance services for everyone. Mr. Chairman, we all signed up to the 2030 vision that Surrey will be a uniquely special place where everyone has a great start to life, people live healthy and fulfilling lives, contribute to their community, and no one is left behind. I am confident that this budget, and more particularly the transformation programmes that sit beneath it, will take us one step closer to achieving that vision, and I therefore commend this budget to members. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. I'll shortly give the leaders of the minority groups an opportunity to speak, but before I do, if any member is proposing to move an amendment, that member must make it clear at the beginning of his speech as and when you come to it, so that it can be handled accordingly. So first of all, I will invite Mr. Button to make a statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I begin by saying that I very much appreciated the tone and much of the content of what the leader had to say, but I do have to explain why my group will be voting against this budget. Well, perhaps you'd listen to the reasons and give some credit in the spirit of what the rabbi said at the beginning of the meeting. I don't think that's a very constructive thing to say. So I'm setting out this morning the reasons why I and my group will be voting against the budget papers as presented to us. We understand the extreme difficulties the council faces in producing a balanced budget, but we believe some core principles have been elided, and some significant failures to address important issues are manifest. In terms of the failures, they are as follows. There is a failure to update our treasury management policy so as to generate the best level of income from investment funds. As a result, there are cuts in services which might otherwise be unnecessary. We need to be up there with the best, and I can cite my own district council, Tandridge, as one of them, and aiming for at least six per cent return, and we are far from that position. There is a failure to address our property portfolio in what is looking like a failing joint venture so that residents see valuable property empty, boarded up and wasting valuable resource. This is bad for the council's image with residents, misses key opportunities to support funding for services and leaves an outward invisible sign of inaction and neglect. The budget is balanced by identifying savings in adult social care and children's services, the vast majority of which are invisible to members, are identified as risky or very risky in terms of deliverability, and of which the impact on residents we cannot quite know. We cannot, therefore, sign off the unknown. While we recognise the necessity, we cannot know how residents' entitlements will be affected. We welcome the fact that there is now a drive to improve our children's services, but we cannot yet know how this drive is balanced with very deep cuts. We are asked to trust, we are asked to take a leap in the dark. If we voted for this budget, we would be guessing at the impact on residents and so cannot make an informed judgement. While it is hard to know how the impacts could have been made known to us, the cuts required are deeper and more wide-ranging as the result of the council's failure to address the deep-rooted problems which I referred to earlier, and which have been identified over the last five years at least. The leader was right, there is much left undone that we currently have to face. The council's complacency, its wishful thinking in the past, its banking on a chimerical bailout and a failure to address the treasury management and property portfolio comes back to haunt us and therefore makes life so much harder. We support the thrust of the proposals on SEND, but have some concerns about how families will experience the process in the light of the history here. There is a major issue of trust which families have in the fairness, the timeliness and the appropriateness of send provision, whilst so many children have to travel outside Surrey and families have to fight for their children's entitlements. We should not have to take these matters on trust. When you consult in future, could I ask please that you are specific about what you're consulting on? We cannot support the closure of the children's centres as currently proposed. The failure to have a satellite in South Tandridge, the closure of the Leatherhead Centre which serves a deprived area in North Leatherhead indicates the analysis of the current provision could be hurried or flawed. There is a paper coming to the Strategy and Resources Committee at Tandridge tonight looking at backfilling some of the services that Tandridge is likely to lose, and I welcome that initiative from that council. More work might have been done to configure the proposals more sensitively, possibly with a phased rollout, possibly with some input from local members. We cannot support the budget because our back office costs are among the most expensive in the country. We find it baffling that we are cutting services deep and paying two and a half million on interim management with so many appointments invisible to members and staff disappearing without explanation. That doesn't mean we have a problem with the staff recruited, we of course don't. We have a problem with the lack of transparency and process, and we have to explain it to residents. The problem is, we can't. We can't support the budget because despite all my urging in this chamber many times, residents are going to pay more for services without the confidence that their quality will be properly assured. I have asked for a charter which will promise that contracts will be properly enforced, potholes will stay repaired and the council's services will earn a reputation for competence. Our vision to 2030 needs to contain a more explicit compact, and I have said this before, so that residents can be sure that their hard-earned taxes will pay for safe, competent, class-leading services we can be proud of. We have a long way to go before we can get to that. We do not underestimate the challenges the council faces, and I welcome the tone and the rigour with which the administration and the new leader are setting about their task. But the austerity programme is ideologically driven, and this council is a victim of it. So we cannot collude with cuts we can't understand, which are deeper than they need be, and which will have impacts we cannot know let alone measure. We need a charter of promises for our residents to guarantee them quality and trust. This budget is a leap in the dark for a council with no parachute.
Thank you, Mr. Button. Mr. Harrison.
The latest weasels from the Department of Education is to create a new negative send reserve to offset the overspend. No new money, just bookkeeping. This is a debt due from the government which I think is highly unlikely to be repaid. In November, we looked at the preliminary financial strategy, including the overall budget envelope and the twenty transformation projects, a much more sensible way of operating rather than leaving the details to the March Cabinet. My group can agree with the need for many of these transformations, including the foundation projects such as finance, management information, digital. We can support and are enthusiasts for four projects which are well overdue: accommodation with care and support, learning difficulties transitions, the provision of in-county facilities to replace out-of-county care for SEND children, and health and social care integration. We see their benefits. For other projects, we need more detail to understand the savings, to see if they are practical or doable in the expected timescales, and to understand resident impact. It had been my hope that select committees would be able to get to grips with these projects before this meeting today. I've been disappointed that by and large, select committees have not met to review them in any sort of detail or maybe not even at all, and have been unable to challenge, to critique, to understand the risks and to endorse or otherwise comment on them. At last week's Cabinet, there was a question from a portfolio holder seeking assurances about the level of work carried out in developing the savings plans. The response from the Cabinet member for finance was that it was up to them as portfolio holders and with their service heads to do the necessary work and to satisfy themselves that the savings plans could be met, and there could be no shortcuts or excuses. Members, if we agree this budget today, we're taking on trust that this work has been done as thoroughly as it need be. In the last five years, we've used eighty-eight million in reserves to balance the books, which clearly can't carry on. In the current year, we had nine million of unidentified savings and an impossible send savings target. We look as if we will finish on quite an optimistic basis this year with only dipping into seven billion of reserves despite a mid-year emergency forty million savings programme. Worringly, the extra income from the business rates pilot has just disappeared without much transformation, and we're using substantial capital receipts to meet ongoing project expenditure. The executive director of finance has presented us with a balanced analysis of the budget for the coming year. We have sixteen million of red savings and, for the first time, have identified a specific contingency, ten million. On the positive side, we have perhaps only one million, from my reckoning, in savings yet to be identified, and we are not proposing to dip into reserves. Probing those savings, the ones I find most questionable are the twenty-one million in the children's service, all are marked as red or amber. The strategic director has told us it is a three-year turnaround to get to a children's service we can be truly proud of. Can we actually make this level of savings at the same time as providing more early preventative help and supporting the overhang of youngsters stuck in the system requiring a high level of intervention? I can understand why the service is aiming to reduce the numbers of children's centres providing universal services, leaving those left to focus on early intervention for those in the highest need. I'm disappointed that the papers say little about the future of the youth service. Our leader did talk about what they're doing woking, which I'm intrigued by, but the general approach has been on hold for two years or more now. With the developing problem of county lines, teenage mental health issues, we must look to specialist youth workers, even if we have to devolve traditional youth centres to the voluntary sector. I want to say a word about the property function. Implementing the transformation projects and at the same time developing the property investment portfolio will be a huge challenge, is a huge challenge. That's without the move of County Hall. Our track record with empty properties is not good, this budget will give them yet more to deal with. Property is key to many of these projects, such as accommodation with extra care, and there must be doubts the service can keep up with the rate of change. The leader said a little about government funding, but he avoided special pleading we've heard in the past about traffic volumes and the funding of asylum-seeking children. However, the drop in SEND funding and the ongoing issue of discounts supporting those moved from the NHS into care in the community are key budget issues for us. Chairman, in conclusion, I've tried to be specific in my comments on the budget and to avoid a blanket no just because I sit on the other side of the chamber. However, in the light of my comments and concerns on SEND, libraries, the uncertainty of some of the transformation projects, the challenging level of savings in the children's service and issues with property function and government funding, I am afraid I cannot support today's budget. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Essex, you've proposed an amendment which has already been circulated to the members, and you have a second. Would you like to propose your amendment?
Thank you, Chairman, and I hope you've all got the amendment in advance. I understand that's the new protocol and the best way for us to operate here. The amendment has got two parts which I'll address in turn. Firstly, on the capital budget. Last year, we unanimously agreed to bring special needs school places back in house, so this amendment sets out the need to include this in the capital budget. And last year, our children's services Ofsted rating was not good enough. One of the commitments of our new executive director of children's services that we would ensure looked after children are cared for in Surrey wherever points we need here in Surrey. But why not, as well as making our property investment sensible, separately invest in making our schools more energy efficient as we used to, in a recycling plant so we can take back control of our waste without burning it, and let us lead in renewable energy in Surrey, just for example? So this amendment proposes we specifically-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Mr. Button, Mr. Harrison and Mr. Essex for their comments. I understand where they're coming from, but at the end of the day, this council needs to set a budget, and it needs to do so-
...sure we can do as county councillors here and break the austerity straitjacket of only ever focusing on what we can do within more cuts, but instead looking up, looking forward to investing to save in ways that not only support our most vulnerable through the-
Could you please second the amendment and stick to that, please?
I am, but I'm doing so-
I'm being patient, waiting to hear.
Okay, well, I've moved off the point you're implying, so I formally second it then. Thank you.
Mover, would you like to conclude the debate?
No, I'm quite happy for us to move to a vote, thank you. But I presume that in light of the leader's comments, we're effectively taking this in part, the first half and then the second part, is that your intention?
That's very kind of you to instruct me accordingly, Mr. Harrison. So, if we could vote by show of hands and using the voting system on the first part of the amendment, item sixteen, all those in favour? Press the button as well, please. Thank you. Votes against? Any abstentions? Thank you. And the second part? All those in favour? Press the button as well, please. All those against? Thank you, and any abstentions? Thank you. So the first part is carried and so becomes part of the amended item, the second part is lost, and now let us move back to the main debate. And it is open for speakers, if anyone wishes to speak, otherwise, yes, we will have Mr. Spence.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Harrison has outlined the residents' association independent group's general view towards the budget, so I'm not going to repeat that. As you know, I do not like a circumstance where the community vision is filtered solely through a blue prism and offers have been made to do the process differently, given we've got a leader Cabinet majority ruling group model, but that has been declined. So therefore, when it comes to the budget, where you don't have direct input, it is very difficult to know whether every stone has been turned in terms of trying to translate the community vision into a budget that is appropriate. However, because the blue prism doesn't always get things wrong, there are things there that are positive, and I just wish to highlight a couple of those. The recycling centre in Farnham is to be maintained, and that is greatly welcomed by the community and by the local councillors. And I'd like to thank Wyatt Ramsdale for his work on assisting in getting the community centre retained, and in the third largest town in Surrey, it's essential that it is retained, and I'm very grateful for that. I'm grateful for the whole children's centre being maintained because it is a very important resource, along with the satellite in Puttersgate and councillor MacLeod's ward. It is essential for people in Farnham that those two children's centres continue to function, and they will. So I am genuinely grateful for those decisions. And I think similarly with a lot of the other consultations, the bus concessions, the local groups seem to be happy with the things that have been looked at. So to thank the- So to thank the cabinet and a very productive meeting that councillor MacLeod and I had with councillor Oliver and councillor Camp last Friday to go through a number of issues in Farnham, it is worth praising the things that are correct. I'm not going to go on at length the things that I don't think are correct, but the children's centres is the biggest one elsewhere. I think it is a mistake to make the closures in other areas. I don't think taking services in the children's centres that have been good and in some cases have outstanding qualities and attempting to rejig them into an overall service that is inadequate is the right path. However, I'm well aware that that will proceed based on the numbers in the council, so I'm not going to go on about it for a long period of time. But those children's centres, to me, are very important and essential, and that is one of the reasons that despite my gratitude for the things that have been done well and the things that have been looked at closely, I will be opposing the budget, because the children's centres, to me, are essential to remain open.
Thank you, Mr Spence. Mr Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. The leader said that the budget is challenging and radical. It's certainly radical as far as children's centres are concerned. Closing such a large number is definitely radical. And I personally would be very grateful indeed to look again at the Leatherhead Children's Centre that could well be a satellite for the North and Mold Valley, and I think there are facts that back that up. As far as SEND is concerned, we're talking about bringing it back towards Surrey. We're talking about the schools and ENHS being involved, in other words, doctors and teachers. That means the budget for schools will be much under pressure, as already been mentioned. And we have made some sort of backstop, for want of a better phrase, to from the government that if the funding doesn't come through, we'll have the money to support that. We're also going to have a lot of empty buildings that we've had before and even more in the future. We are going to have to refurbish and spend millions on those buildings to actually get them in a state that we can either resell or actually use them for other purposes. I think that is a number that is a bit questionable, shall we say. As far as the rest of the work is concerned, it comes under the transformation. And how many times have we had transformation in this council in the last ten years? Possibly the fourth or fifth time. So one could be cynical about it, but one mustn't be, must be positive about it. However, that transformation programme is going to cost well over thirty million, looking for savings of about hundred and fifty million, over the three years. Some of those numbers, again, are questionable. One would really need to look at that very closely, and I'm not sure they actually stack up. When we look at that approach, we are going to need more new staff, new staff of a colour that can actually deliver some of the things this transformation programme is looking for. It's also going to need new systems. Surrey's got a great reputation on the IT front, and therefore we're going to be challenged very much there. Therefore, both people and equipment, for want of a better phrase, is going to be needed, and that's going to take time. So we are still looking at maybe at earliest a three-year programme and a delivery of that. I think it's important that we understand what the person in the street will see of that thirty million being used for transformation on the hope of a hundred and fifty million. I see the light flashing because of those issues, because I'm not going to say it's on a wing and a prayer, I think that would be a bit unfair. I do support some of the actions that have been taken, particularly by the Chief Executive and the approach that has been taken on a number of the problem areas we had. But because of the reasons I've just stated, I will not be supporting the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Townsend. Mrs White.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, to me, the budget, as other people have said, it's not all bad. In fact, it's a bit like the curate's egg. But I can't support it, and I will give you three reasons why, very briefly. The first one is to do with highways, and I think there we really need to get our act together as a council. There's a road in my division that it has been agreed will be resurfaced probably by the end of this financial year, so, you know, two months to go. And signs have just gone up to say that Surrey highways are going to go and patch the same road that is going to be resurfaced. Now, my residents are asking for an explanation, and I'm sorry, I can't give them one, because why on earth would you patch a road that you are about to resurface? We need to get that one sorted, and it happens everywhere, not just in my division. The second one, like many people, I'm very concerned about the issue of children's centres. And I've heard all the arguments about needing to have contact with people at home because they're more difficult to reach and they don't automatically go to the children's centre. And that's great, and it's probably necessary. But those same children, before they can go to school and learn to benefit from school education, need to learn how to make social interactions, and very often that is a part of the problem that they have. Without the children's centres for them to go to, they are going to miss that part out. They will go into school isolated and therefore will take a little longer to settle in. The third one is adult social care. Now, we've had cited to us the theories of John Bolton, for whom I have a huge amount of respect, but I seem to remember he was the one who came up with the idea of social capital, which this council adopted, giving it the name family, friends, and community. And for two or three years, we relied on it very heavily to make massive savings in adult social care. And we missed on a number of occasions and had then to look to reserves to make up the shortfall for the amount of money we didn't save. Chairman, the definition of madness is to keep doing the same thing and expecting a different outcome. And I'm sorry, as far as I'm concerned, a lot of the proposals here have been tried, they haven't worked. We have to try and find a different way of solving problems. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs White. Mr Kington.
Mr Chairman, another year and another budget, perhaps delivered with less bluster and a little more humility than in the past. I think we can thank councillor Tim Oliver for that. But of course, very much the things remain the same in other areas. Of course, the parlour state of the council's finances is partly a result of the government's reduction in grant funding allocated to the county council. But independent reports by the well-respected Chartered Institute of Public Finance and Accountancy and commissioned by Surrey County Council itself, not once but twice, has severely criticised the county council for its financial management and budget planning. Meanwhile, a failed offset continues to demand more money targeted at children's services and the inspection of the Surrey County Council's fire and rescue services, and that it's inadequate at efficiently keeping people safe and is failing to make the best use of its resources shows again that some of our basic services have been failed by this administration. The budget contains more cuts, and what does that offer to the residents of Yoolcourt, Oriol, and Cuddington, my division? Two of the four children's centres in Epsom and Yool will be closed. The Epsom Recycling Centre will remain closed for two days a week, and additional charges are being introduced for household waste. The much-needed Edge Youth Centre on the Longbead Estate is closed due to a decision not to appoint staff, and free travel concessions for disabled passholders will no longer start at nine AM. Of course, the street lights remain switched off, and now we learn that the Epsom Yool local highway budget allocation is to be cut by forty percent. This is a budget which is designed for locally determined highway improvements, so more bad news for my residents' roads and pathways. All this deemed necessary with promises of better things to come, but of course, we've heard that in nearly every budget in this council, so we shall have to wait and see. And of course, those residents that I represent will also have seen in the papers the huge sums of money being paid out for high-level interim and permanent members of the senior management team. All no doubt crucial to the transformation project, but a hard message to sell when the underlying theme seems to be cuts to services with no immediate prospect of improvements to compensate. Mr Chairman, the lack of detail in several areas of the budget and the fact that many of the planned savings listed are in red and unlikely to be achievable do not allow me to vote for this budget. It's a Conservative budget designed to get out us out of a mess by the Conservatives, both locally and nationally. Having said that, I can only hope on behalf of my residents that the present political and new leadership of the council can start to make a real and positive step towards a time when this council is known for its financial competence and high standard of service delivery across all services. I look forward to that, because that's what I'm being promised, and that's what my residents are being promised.
Thank you, Mr Kington. Mr Harmer.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to pick up something that Mr Button said, which worries me considerably, since this is going out to the wider public, and that was when he suggested that we ought to be able to improve significantly our treasury management strategy and that we ought to be looking for six percent return. As far as the strategy itself is concerned, that was debated ten days ago in the Corporate Overview Scrutiny Committee, and the decisions to continue with it or not will be made at the Audit and Governance Meeting on Thursday. Both of these are meetings held in public, and I invite any member who feels that they have some good ideas to offer to come along and contribute. But I have to say that if anybody offered me six percent return at the moment on my savings, I would assume that I was going to lose a lot. Wouldn't you? And I'd like to remind you that quite a lot of our treasury management function was a result of our being extraordinarily fortunate ten years ago not to lose a very substantial amount of money on investments in Icelandic banks, which probably were returning six percent or more. I don't know exactly what the figures were now, I don't recall. But I just think that it's right that the public should appreciate that we do have a very robust approach to controlling treasury management strategy, an approach that is run by members in the Council Overview Scrutiny Committee and subsequently at the Audit and Governance Committee. And anybody's welcome, absolutely welcome.
Thank you, Mr Harmer. Mrs Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman. The decision was taken last week at Cabinet to make some changes to children's centres. I don't intend to rerun the whole of that debate here today, but I think some points have been made about the children's centres aspects of the budget, which need a little bit more elaboration rather than just the comments that have been made. First of all, just to remind everyone that in 2015 and again in 2018, the council received Ofsted judgements of inadequate for the way we're delivering care and support to children who are really those most in need of the council's help, children who need help in safeguard, the area of safeguarding. And quite rightly, members have expressed not just their disappointment but their outrage that we've been unable to change the way we do things enough to make sure that we really do safeguard the children that need us most in Surrey. And the changes that are being proposed to children's centre are part of the changes, of wider changes in children's services. And I think that the members who've made comments today would be justified in their comments if it was a standalone cut, if that was all we were proposing to do. It does sound illogical. But it isn't standalone in any way at all, and I hope that you've all had the opportunity to read the newsletter I sent out to you on Friday, which goes into some detail, and there are links that you can click on for further detail, about the whole jigsaw of changes that is taking place in children's services to try to ensure that we safeguard the children who need us most more effectively and that we do get away from that horrible phrase of being inadequate in our safeguarding arrangements, because that's something that none of us can live with. So kindly, I think, in a way, Stephen Spence has used the word radical about us, and Stephen, that's a great word to hear you using, because I know it's a word that means is positive in your language. We are being radical in our determination, but the particular move about children's centres is not the radical bit, in the sense that it's not something that's just been invented in Surrey. Other authorities have already done what we are now doing in closing some of their children's centres, using those that are left as a family centre, so not just supporting the nought-to-fives but supporting nought-to-elevens, and having more of a focus on outreach workers, not just on those buildings themselves. So this is what we're determined to do, to use the remaining centres as outreach for the families that really, really need us, rather than spending money, given that resources in every aspect of the council's life are tight, rather than spending our money on buildings, management, governance, it's about having an increased number of outreach workers in the new model. And you will have heard by now that the new model is called family resilience, and if you delve down into the papers, you'll see what family resilience really means. It's about having a multi-agency team that goes and supports the family so that they can become better parents for their children, able to keep them safe in their families. And that is the whole aspiration behind the changes that we're making in children's services. So children's centre changes are one small element. They are families, they become family centres, delivering over a wider range, age range, and the model of social work practice that will go behind this outreach is about multi-agency teams going in and delivering really, really good early help exactly where the families need it. So I would like to give you the more, the positive story about the changes to children's centres and to reassure you, it's not radical in the sense of being innovative, because a recent National Audit Office report showed that where five hundred children's centres had been closed in other authorities, that there was no increase in child protection cases, in fact, a slight reduction, that the early help that was delivered in the new outreach model was getting to the right families and more effective, because what we do know in Surrey is that not all the most vulnerable children, the children who need us most, have been brought into the children's centre buildings, and we want to make sure that we're reaching those children in other ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Lewis. Mrs Hammond.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm really disappointed with some of the comments we've had from the opposition members. I am confident in the abilities of our cabinet members, however, will continue to scrutinise, as I'm required to do, in relation to, in particular, the Children Education Select Committee, in relation to things going forward. Our Ofsted reports did highlight that we are not outward-looking enough, and we can't do more of the same. So retaining things as we are is not an option. We have to move, we have to look to other successes. And as Mary has just said, in relation to what has happened elsewhere outside of this county council, there's evidence from other authorities that it's not a leap in the dark. Therefore, Mr Button, it is evidence that other areas are being successful in doing things in different ways, and we need to learn as a local authority to hear from others. We also need to trust in our partnerships, in the people that we will be dealing with to deliver our services in other ways. And I do want to refer you, which is what I always tend to do, to the Equality Impact Assessments, which I hope you've all read, because we do have to take due regard for them. But on page, if you're using modgov, one-one-four, page one-one-four, paragraph eight, "Members are also required to comply with section eleven of the Children Act, which places a duty on the council to ensure their functions and any services they contract out to others are discharged having regard to the need to safeguard and promote the welfare of children." So I believe that we are doing that. And also, I'm not an expert at finance, and I'm standing talking in the budget, but I do accept the advice of people that do know what they're talking about, and the section one-five-one officer has approved our budget. And particularly in relation to, he says finally, in accordance with the Prudential Code, he supports proposed capital and investment strategy. I'm sorry, but I have to... I'm sorry, but I have to accept what a professional says, and so, Chairman, I absolutely will be supporting this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hammond. Mr. O'Reilly.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I will be supporting the budget in a few minutes' time. I think it's a responsible budget. In a sense, Chairman, I was saying that it's a recovery budget, particularly in the fact that for the first time in many years, we're not using our reserves to sustain a balanced budget, as Tim Oliver said right at the beginning. That's a really very important progress that this council will have made and is part of an integral to the Transformation Programme that I think commands broad support right across the chamber. So in that sense, you know, although I have, like many members, some concerns about individual components of the budget, and rightly so, nonetheless, we have to see these things as a whole in the realm, because that's what our residents expect us to do. Now, Chairman, in that context, and because this has been a friendly, rather low-key debate, I don't wish to raise the temperature, at least not too much anyway, but when I hear Mr. Barton in a very, as always, a very powerful speech, comments saying that his group will vote against the budget, I'm not sure whether the residents' group will vote against the budget or will abstain, but for those who are thinking of voting or planning to vote against the budget, I don't think it is unreasonable, given that this is the big day of the year, to say, if you don't like it, what's the alternative? You have to, you have to put something else. If the Liberal Democrats want to spend more on roads or children's services or what have you, then they should put a motion down or an amendment, just as Mr. Essex did right at the beginning of the meeting, to say where this is coming, that this is where we want to propose, to say how it's going to be funded, and if necessary, some of the, I may be wrong, but I would, some of, my speculation is that some of the proposals that the Liberal Democrats would favour would require an increase in council tax beyond the statutory minimum. Have the courage of your convictions to say so. Otherwise, you know, I say we must now try and reduce the temperature, otherwise it's reducing to gesture politics. And if one thing at this critical time of our council our residents do not want, it is not gesture politics, it's real, adult, mature, sensible politics, and that is what this budget delivers.
Thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Mr. Cooksey.
Thank you, Chairman. I will be voting against this budget. It's based on a transformation programme that we are told will deliver better services for residents. Well, I challenge the administration to explain to me how it will deliver better services to the residents that I represent, and I'll take two particular issues. I stated in Cabinet, Chairman, and I make no apologies for saying it again, the children's centre service in my division is regarded as excellent. On successive inspections since its establishment, it's been given an outstanding designation by Ofsted. It's made a huge impact on the communities in the Goodwins and Chart Down estates in my division, amongst the most deprived communities in Surrey. Children and families have benefited enormously from the dedication and commitment of the leadership and staff working in the centre, and that work has improved the life chances of very many children and families in the community and is highly valued. The centre is full, with more families wishing to take advantage of the service than the service is able to cope with. What does this budget do? It cuts the resources to the centre by an estimated 58%, but that's not all. It also expects the centre, with this vastly reduced resource, to take on board the work currently carried out by the Leatherhead Children's Centre, mainly on an outreach basis, and the Leatherhead Centre, in another of the most deprived areas in Surrey, will be closed. The centre staff have made it clear, time and again, in the various discussions and consultations they have had over the past year, that there is no remote possibility under these conditions of being able to deliver a comprehensive service of the quality which they have so far provided. That's the professional view of the staff members who have achieved that outstanding status. And local opposition has been equally vocal, from families, from the families who will be affected, from residents throughout the area, and by unanimous vote of More Valley District Council when the issue was discussed. And that's only, and that's not the only local service that are under attack in the budget. Can the administration explain how closing the Dorking CRC delivers a better service to residents? Whilst I very much welcome the extra time that's been granted to, the extra time for, to look at how further savings might be achieved to prevent closure, there is a deadline closure date on those proposals. Yes, the Dorking site is an older site, it's a less well-used site, but it's less well-used because it now only operates three days a week, rather than six and seven days that it used to operate, and however it's indicated that it may be less well-used, there are long queues for access when it's open, and that is, that is important, Chairman. If closure was confirmed, many residents would have to travel well over 20 minutes in each direction, so I hope there can be some, I hope there can be a means of saving it, but that is by far from being definite. And there are two examples of this budget, of how this budget affects the community that I represent.
Mr. Cooksey, if you could start winding up, please. Thank you.
Any viable evidence that the aim is to deliver better services and to simply trust them to do it? It's a bit like the Conservative government passing a motion to make alternative arrangements to replace the Irish Backstop.
Okay, Mr. Cooksey, Mr. Cooksey, thank you very much. Could you sit down, please, now? And would everybody please obey the rules? I apply to everybody equally. Call Mr. Povey.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't mind raising the temperature in the chamber. It's very easy for opposition to criticise, isn't it? No alternatives put forward, this is why I even said there are alternatives, but of course you didn't suggest any. But I think the Liberal Democrat Group has never recovered from the last time they did put a budget forward and suggested cutting primary school budgets, and I don't think they've ever done one since. I will be supporting this budget, it does take us to a sustainable position, which I absolutely welcome. And I think our messages to the people of Surrey should be very positive of all those good things that are in this. Mary Lewis has given us a really good exposition of the children's services and how we're taking that forward. But the three other, four other things I would particularly call attention to are the special, special education needs children, bringing them back into Surrey, how can anybody argue against that? Extra care accommodation for those elderly who don't need to go into a full residential care, a kind of halfway house, if you like, absolutely fantastic. I was at the seminar yesterday for adult social care, replacing that initial conversation about what are your ambitions? That is absolutely fantastic, best practice, a wonderful change in that approach to service. And of course, I have to welcome the change around the recycling centres, and as the leader said, I've been made chairman of the task group, and I would welcome suggestions from people on how we can move forward. I've already had quite a few, but I welcome more. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Povey. Mr. Mallett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this is a massive budget, and of course, it's not possible for, to actually oppose the main thrust of it, but nevertheless, it has to be recognised that this budget comes about from government pressure, and that what the government is actually doing to this council and other councils is it's causing the council to have a race to the bottom. I can only say, as I've said before, on that general principle, that when some of the services get into the real difficulty that they are because of this policy, then I would simply quote Paul Hainsworth, who was a Pricewaterhouse leader of Elbridge Council for a number of years, and his answer to this kind of problem, which is certainly mine, is you reach a point where you need to give the keys back. If the government can do it cheaper or better than we can, then on the money that they're allowing, then on some of these problems, they should be asked to do it. I do have some problems with the budget, and I recognise that some of these may be dealt with during the year and some seem to be impossible. The first that Mr. Povey mentioned, actually, the question of send, bringing these children back and pushing them into schools, the problem here is that the Department of Education has derived a Machiavellian scheme for paying and not paying and funding and not funding, and that is not going to work. The school, if there is not funding for this, then the education of schools is going to go down. There's, one thing that's not in the budget and has not really come to the fore is the fact that Anchor Homes and other residential home leaseholders to the council will be either returning their leases or renegotiating them in the coming year, and that's going to be a costly problem. One thing I've been continually concerned about in this council has been the treatment of grants to the voluntary sector. They've been slashed, the council in the past and continually has maintained that a volunteer is worth nine pounds for every one pound of expenditure, but that's not shown in the way the council's been treating the grants. And in amongst this budget, there's continual reference to the importance of the voluntary sector, and yet in the past year, we have been voluntary people in both Elbridge and Epsom and Yule and elsewhere, and really the council has to change its policy on that. And then, finally, as far as I'm concerned, the treatment of disabled grants. I and others in this council, and I'm not the only person, have been to the Coalition Disabled People's meetings, and we've seen that very disabled people, blind people, people with no use of their hands, people who can just get to work with the disabled grant allowance on mobility, and these have been cut or removed, and these are the problems that I see that need to be dealt with. I'm not, I'm happy for the Conservative group to pass this budget, but I think I will just allow them to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mallett. Mr. Ramsdale.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to speak very briefly on the topic of children's centres, largely in support of councillor Lewis, but I specifically look to the late to Farnham and seek the support of councillor Spencer, the way that he voiced his support of some of my actions earlier. Stephen, I too, like you, am really pleased to see that the Hale Centre is staying open. The reason I'm pleased about it is because it's going to operate as a family centre, providing an outreach model, a model that will focus on the children that don't get taken because their parents can't be bothered or are otherwise engaged, to put it politely, to focus on children who live further away and mums and dads can't walk that distance. The great thing about an outreach model, the family centre, is it supports those who've got the most or the greatest need. It supports the children and families where the parents can't or won't or just can't be bothered. And it's not location-based, so you're not lucky because you live 100 yards from the centre and therefore can walk there, but they'll come to you if the need's the greatest. Stephen, what I'd like is your support in operating a model, an outreach model, that will support everybody in the area, all of Farnham, based on needs. There isn't a centre in South Farnham, we need the people to be able to travel, we need that change of focus, and part of that change of focus means we need money. And some of that will be by releasing it from spending money on operating a centre to do things that, to be frank, I think the charity sector would do better. So please, have a think about what you said, and certainly I will be voting in favour of service, not buildings, and a service that focuses on needs, not looking nice because we've got a sign outside the door. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsdale. I've got another six speakers and that'll make 20, I'm happy to have some more. Mr. Darby.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Children's centres, again, they would be referred to as Shaw Start Centres. I feel at the moment we're heading for a very uncertain start for our families, and in relation to the name children's centres, I welcome the reference now to family, but in, for the children's centres, it's not just the children themselves, but it's the parents very often, the mothers. What I feel we're going to lose in the Dittens and maybe in other areas where children's centres will close, is that we are not looking at postnatal depression, we're not looking at isolation, and we're not looking at abuse. Those sad items are not just prevalent in areas of deprivation, but they affect the Dittens. The Dittens also has areas of deprivation, it seems to me that those residents will effectively be abandoned. That deals with children's centres. We're also not looking, as we think, I think we should be, at the, what other uses of the buildings there might be. There's a reference to this, I think, in the papers, but no firm plans, no joined-up thinking, no coordination. We now look at the library. And again, in the Dittens, we're looking at the possibility of losing our library. I hope that won't happen, I very strongly wish that any reassessment be taken into account. There are fantastic services supplied in our libraries, actual books, not just Amazon delivery style. Buses, the expectation, I think, is that we will have a consultation on bus subsidies. If that happens and bus subsidies are withdrawn, there must be a strong possibility of the buses themselves disappearing. Residents in the Dittens are referred to additional medical facilities in Cobham, they reach by an uncertain bus once an hour. How on earth will they do that if the buses disappear? Only in the last few days, the care home, Linwood, in, also nursing close at the Dittens, apparently it has had an inadequate CQC rating and is in special measures. You will see inevitably from what I've said that so far as the residents in the Dittens are concerned, there is an element of despair. What support are we getting from Surrey County Council? I'm not sure how much time further I have. We've had reference to alternatives. One of my very first interjection speeches in this chamber, more than 12 months ago, was in relation to voluntary additional council tax. Westminster City Council have tried that and raised apparently half a million, Islington Council apparently have also tried that. I will, nearly at the end, utility bills, what have we done for that and what are the alternatives for the cost of our communications team? Those, very briefly, are alternatives which we should and could be looking at. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Chairman. I apologise. I apologise because we've got to raise the temperature of this chamber. We've been going now an hour and 20 minutes, and it's very clear that the opposition haven't listened to anything we've said. We are not closing CRCs, I don't know how many times we got to say it before people realise it, but we are not closing CRCs. We presented a very sensible-thinking budget, something that we've actually listened to residents, we've listened to officers, we've listened to specialists, and the opposition have just rejected the budget, but actually haven't come forward with any substantive idea or solution on how to present a better budget. So I'm sorry, Chairman, I don't know how long we've got to debate this before people listen to what we say. I will be supporting this budget, it's a thinking budget, and it's clearly a way forward. So I will be supporting the budget, Chairman, and perhaps we need to circulate the papers again so that the opposition will actually read what we've said this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Mr. Furness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm quite pleased at length because it's meant that my officers have been able to answer councillor White's question. Briarfield Road is, Briarfield Road, which I believe the unnamed road is, is actually going to be resurfaced in full. The incorrect signs were put up, but thank you councillor White, you beat the officers to it before they could make the switch over. In addition, though, I do just want to raise that we are continuing a commitment of 20 million capital planned maintenance spend, 11 of which is on major and preventative on our roads, and that's in addition to the 8 million that Colling very well secured previously committed for this year. So roads are a key part of where we are putting the money, but we do have to bear in mind that this is not a statutory service, we do need to put the money where it is needed. We do need to put the money where it is needed, in adult and children's education and care. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Furness. I've got four more speakers. Denise Turner-Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. I just thought I would raise with members the issue of Surrey Fire and Rescue Service, as it was mentioned by Eva Kingston. The transformation programme for Surrey Fire and Rescue Service is well underway. We're shifting our resources from response to prevention and protection to protect the most vulnerable, which is very consistent with the current council policy of no one left behind. I think there's a term in the fire service which is a settle-down, and I would draw parallels with that term as to how this budget's been configured. We've taken a measured and pragmatic approach to the budget, and I think that we should all support it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Turner-Stewart. Mr Martin.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would like to speak in support of the budget and also make an intervention regarding the children's centres. Some 10 years ago, Mr Chairman, I was the portfolio holder for education, and I was responsible for the rollout of all of the children's centres in the county, using government funds, and with the thought that those children's centres would target those areas of deprivation and need and the children and parents most in need of such a service. Sadly, two things have happened. Number one, the funding has disappeared. Number two, sadly, the children's centres themselves are actually not doing precisely what they were designed to do. So we have to therefore rethink the strategy, and I think Mrs Lewis has spoken many times and very eloquently about what she's doing and the way in which the approach will be changed to ensure that we do reach the people that are most in need. Family centres and a whole outreach programme is surely the right thing to do and is in line with what the approach was originally intended to do. So I welcome the family centres. I hope that they will succeed very greatly. I speak in support of them and, of course, in support of the budget as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Martin. Mr Elwood.
Thank you, Chairman. David Hodge and I didn't agree on much, which is probably why I've been a back-bencher for 11 years, but we agreed on a couple of things, just to get the chip on my shoulder. And one thing we agreed on was neither of us could understand why the government is spending 56 billion on a railway line at the same time as making cuts elsewhere, because as David used to say, if you need to get to Manchester 10 minutes earlier, get an earlier train. But the fact is, they are, and every time there's any major infrastructure project, there's objections, and we have to deal with that situation as it is. Contrary to what Mr Bottom thinks of me, I think I do sympathise with a lot of the objections, particularly over children's centres. Boxgrove Children's Centre is not in my division, but the amount of understandable flack I get, not least from my own daughter, about that children's centre is shared by all of you I know. However, and the point that was made by the colleague on my right, I don't have a better alternative to propose than the one that has been proposed. What I would urge is, to counter councillor Lewis, that we make sure we get our message out, because I know we think we get the message out, but I don't think we do. People don't understand the raison d'etre behind this, and if they did, then they believe what they read locally, which is not necessarily true. So in terms of recycling, well, it's good that the centres are being kept open. I'm a very green tourist to Essex, and I think the way to reduce recycling is to reduce the amount of recycling in the first place, but that's a debate for another day. So yes, I do understand the opposition's concerns. I would thank the independent group for actually raising some positive comments. Despite my reservations on the individual things, which my colleague mentioned, as a whole, I will support the budget, but not blindly, and I will just finish by saying, let's get the reasons out there, otherwise people believe what they hear and what they read in the local press, and that's a disaster. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Elwood. Mr Hawkins.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr Harmer mentioned the audit and governance meeting on Thursday, and bearing in mind the amount of interest shown in this chamber regarding the treasury management policy, David, we may need a larger room to accommodate everybody coming. Can I just point out, two lines in that paper say, 'The council has adopted the Chartered Institute of Public Finance and Accountancy, Treasury Management Code of Practice in the public services. We also follow the prudential indicators.' So that is already embedded in council policy. Now, out of a committee of six, Mr Foster and Mr Spence, who is very vocal, welcomely vocal, he has the opportunity to input and frequently uses it, and is welcome to do so. So please come along. Sorry, I'll follow your publicity, David. Can I also just say, in relation to the budget, I've only been here a short time. This is a budget at a point in time. It is not the end of the story, as far as I can see. There's been a whole change of attitude within this council in the period of time that I've been here. I welcome it, I support it, but I believe it is only part of the journey. It is not the end of the journey. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Hawkins. And finally, Mr MacLeod.
Thank you, Chairman. I won't repeat what my colleague Stephen Spence said, but I'd just like to add a couple of comments. In terms of the recycling centre, yes, we are very pleased it's been saved, and thanks to a very good community effort in Farnham, but we're still left with a very unsatisfactory recycling centre, and things need to be done to produce a much better one. So we will be feeding into Dr Povey's exercise, and I'm sure Wyatt will be supporting us in that respect. In terms of children's centres, we did visit both the children's centres in Farnham, and they are really excellent children's centres, and we spoke to both the chief executive and the leader, and we received from both really the same sort of message, and they spoke with great conviction about what needs to be done, and we understand what they're saying. We're not necessarily entirely convinced, and one reason I'm not entirely convinced, actually, about the new strategy is when you speak to the staff in the children's centres, they are not convinced. They are actually very good people. They are centres that Surrey should be very proud of, in fact, because they're excellent centres, they're very much appreciated by the local people, you get very good staff. But you haven't actually won over the staff to your new strategy, and that's the big problem. If you're going to succeed in this new strategy, which I concede might be the right one, actually, because I'm not an expert in children's support and so on, and Surrey clearly has a problem, and maybe this wider vision of doing things in home is possibly the right thing to do. But if you're going to succeed in it, you have to win over the staff. You haven't actually convinced them. The consultation hasn't been done very well, and if you're going to succeed in this new strategy, which I wish you well in, and it's very important, and I hope it works out, you have to win over the staff. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr MacLeod. If I say so, it's been a very reasoned and rational debate, no need for heat. I'm pleased to hear it. So Leader, would you kindly reply to the debate?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I mean, I recognise, and I believe we all recognise, that there are significant challenges in improving our services, and doing that at the same time as balancing our budget without depleting our reserves any further. I truly believe we are all wanting the same thing. I think I would adopt Eva Kingston's words, which were that we should demonstrate that this council is financially competent and has high standards of delivery. Absolutely right, completely with you on that. But we must and we will face up to the challenges, and we need to change the way in which we do things. Mrs White attributed it to a definition of madness, probably a definition of politicians, actually, that they believe that still doing the same things in the same way and expect a different outcome is the right way about it. Absolutely not. We are not getting this right. In children's services, we have a failing service. It is abundantly clear to everybody from the Ofsted report and beyond. This is not a criticism in any way of the children's centres and the work that they're doing, but we cannot afford to continue to do it in that same way, either financially or in terms of the outcomes. So we must push on with a different way of addressing these things. Hopefully, we will be able to engage with our partners around the delivery of the more universal services alongside the services that we will focus on, which are those people that are most in need of our help and support. There are just a few points, Mr Chairman, I'd just like to pick up on, and on the property, that was raised a number of times. I don't think there's any officer in this authority now that hasn't got the clear message from me that my own personal focus is on sorting out the property estate. I started that when I had the portfolio 18 months ago, and it has been, I believe, I have been very, very clear with the officers that that is an absolute priority. It is, you know, not only is it wrong, quite wrong, to see empty properties sitting around the county, it is a missed opportunity to raise finances to support our other services. So I can absolutely assure you that that is a number-one priority, that we have an asset strategy panel who will report back in April. We now have a list of properties that we are looking at in terms of either disposal or development, and all of you, all members, will receive contact from officers where any of those buildings or properties are in your division, so that you get to hear that before anybody else. We are looking at reducing from 300 operational buildings down to 100, and of course, I've already announced that we will be decanting from County Hall. In terms of, I'm not going to go over all of the issues that have been raised around adult social care, children's services, children's centres. Mrs Lewis has explained far more eloquently than I ever can the justification for the remodelling of the children's services. All I would say is, which as I said at the last council meeting, you know, we need to make the select committee process far more robust. That is the opportunity for you to get into the detail here. We shouldn't be having the debate about misunderstanding about what these services are intended to do. So that is my plea, that, you know, John O'Reilly is leading a cross-party piece of work here to look at those structures. Our new monitoring officer, Geoff Wild, who comes with a long experience, not only just in our adjoining county of Kent but elsewhere, he will input in that, and, you know, that is the way forward, as I see it, to get proper engagement. I think, Mr Chairman, there were just some other things, you know, thank you to Stephen Spence, and thank you for renewing your offer to sit in the Cabinet. You may be just a little bit behind some other members of the Conservative group, but you never know. And, you know, you talk about a blue prism, I don't think that is fair. At the end of the day, you know, the officers are the experts in many of these areas. Of course, it's censured by us as elected members, and we've had a good debate about some of those subjects today, but, you know, we are dependent upon their expertise. I accept, as has been raised, the cost of interims is not good, you know, and the chief executive is fully aware that we need to get to a position where we have got permanent staff here, but at the moment, we don't have in all of the areas the expertise that we need. And the quickest way to get that expertise into the organisation is to use interim officers. And, you know, we will, over the coming year, as the restructuring of the various areas completes, I hope, move to a position where we are less dependent upon interims. I think just one other point in terms of what Chris Townsend raised regarding the transformation programmes, you know, I'd just make the point again that, you know, we have been very open, I have been very open and honest about the states in which some of our services are in, you know, the Surrey Fire and Rescue Service, again, you know, had a poor review. There's some very positive work that has now started yesterday with the unions, and I hope that we will move forward with that in a way that is collaborative and, again, will improve outcomes. Mr Chairman, let's be clear about this. This year is all about getting our heads down and delivering. That is what we're going to do, that is what this administration is going to do. You know, I understand the noise, and, you know, we have listened, we have dealt with the CRCs. Mr Cooksey, just to remind you, the Dorking CRC will not be closing. The children's centre in your division is not being closed either. So let's just understand this. There are things to be done there. There is a budget here to be delivered, there are transformation programmes that we have to work our way through, there are detailed business cases, the select committees have every opportunity to look at those. I'm not going to stand here and blame anybody, I'm not going to point fingers. At the end of the day, of course, it would be helpful if the government were to provide us with additional funding. We have the opportunity, as part of the consultation on fair funding, to make our case, and we will make our case directly and through the county council networks and through the LGA. We also, assuming that it's rolled out in the way that it's expected, you know, business rate retention at 75% on growth on business rates will be helpful to this county, provided that we can continue to grow or to encourage economic growth. So there is some hope down the line that actually there will be a fairer funding formula and that we will receive some additional funds. But at the end of the day, I ask every member in this chamber, you know, to engage in delivering this, you know, and I hope that, you know, through the use of the committee system, that you do challenge, you investigate, and you support, and hopefully, Mr Chairman, this time next year, we can have the whole of this chamber voting in support of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. So we now move to the vote on the detailed recommendations, as slightly amended this morning. We now also include the council tax pre-set proposals that are contained therein, and as I stated at the start of this item, I intend to take the recommendations as one recorded vote. I'm now going to invite the monitoring officer to take the recorded vote, and when you're called, please say 'for', 'against', or 'abstain'. Over to the monitoring officer.
Miss Azad? Mr Beckett? Can you turn your microphones on when you vote, please? Thank you. Mr Benison?
For.
Miss Boot? Mr Button?
Against.
Mrs Bowes? Absent. Mrs Bramhall? Mr Brett Warburton?
For.
Mr Carrasco?
For.
Mr Chapman? Mrs Clack?
For.
Mr Cooksey?
Against.
Mrs Curran?
For.
Mr Darby?
Against.
Mr Deech?
For.
Mr Elwood?
For.
Mr Essex?
Against.
Mr Robert Evans?
Against.
Mr Tim Evans?
For.
Mr Few?
For.
Mr Foster?
Against.
Mr Fury?
For.
Mr Furness?
For.
Mr Gardiner?
For.
Mr Goodman?
For.
Mr Goodwin?
Against.
Mrs Goodwin?
Against.
Miss Griffiths?
For.
Dr Grantduff?
For.
Mr Galati?
For.
Mr Hall?
For.
Mrs Hammond?
For.
Mr Harmer?
For.
Mr Harris?
For.
Mr Harrison?
Abstain.
Mr Hawkins?
For.
Miss Heath?
For.
Mr Hussain?
For.
Mrs Isles?
For.
Mr Islam?
For.
Mr Kemp?
For.
Mr Kingston?
Against.
Mr Knight?
For.
Mrs Lake?
For.
Mrs Lay?
Absent.
Mrs Lewis?
For.
Mr MacLeod?
For.
Mr McIntosh?
For.
Mr Mallot?
For.
Mr Mansfield?
For.
Mr Martin?
For.
Mrs Mason?
Against.
Mrs Mooney?
For.
Miss Morley?
For.
Mrs Mosley?
For.
Mrs Mountain?
For.
Mrs Muir?
For.
Mr Nutty?
For.
Mr Oliver?
For.
Mr O'Reilly?
For.
Dr Povey?
For.
Mr Ramsdale?
For.
Mrs Rivers?
Against.
Mrs Rush?
For.
Mr Samuels?
For.
Mr Spence?
Against.
Mrs Steeds?
For.
Dr Shanto? Dr Shanto?
For.
Mr Taylor? Ms Thompson? Absent. Mrs Thorne? Absent. Mr Townsend?
Against.
Ms Turner-Stewart?
For.
Mr Walsh?
For.
Mrs Watson?
Against.
Mrs White?
Against.
Mr Witham?
For.
And Mrs Young?
Thank you, we'll just pause while the votes counted. So we have a total of fifty-four for, seventeen against and three abstentions, so that is carried. Thank you, members. We now move to item seven, members' question time. I've had notice of nine questions, five minutes per question for supplementary questions and these must be framed as questions, please, not statements and be relevant to the original question. I'll limit question time to forty-five minutes, at which point I'll finish the question we're on and close the item. If any questions are not covered during the forty-five minutes, a written answer has been tabled and members can of course follow up with the relevant cabinet member outside the meetings. So first question, Mr Robert Evans.
Thank you very much and can I thank the leader for his response. I wonder, in a little bit of elaboration on this, has the council, or has the leader received any useful updates or advice from central government on this on the way forward? And is every council in the country operating in isolation on this or are we cooperating with other councils and sharing research, ideas and fears on this very important matter?
Thank you. Thank you. Any, any others? Leader?
Thank you for the supplementary, Mr Evans. I think the collaboration, collaborative work is being done through the South East Seven councils, so there, there was a, a meeting the other day, so there, there is some work that's being done to, to sort of coordinate, but, but there isn't that much guidance, in fairness, from central government.
Thank you, Leader. Question two, Mrs Goodwin, do you have a supplementary?
Mr Chairman, thank you. I'd like to thank the cabinet member for her response, thank you very much. And I do actually welcome the carer confidence benchmarking scheme, it looks very good. Just very briefly, before I ask my question, there was a report on BBC Breakfast this morning from Carers UK about carers and their work life. And just three key points, that six hundred people a day are leaving their jobs because of the demands of being a carer, a half a million people quit their job in the UK in the last two years and fifteen per cent of the working population is now working and caring. So now to my question. Surrey County Council employs about seven thousand people and my question is to the leader of the council and the cabinet members. So will you, as, you know, key employer, so to speak, lead the way by putting yourself forward for the accreditation assessment to demonstrate that is, it is an employer that offers an inclusive workplace for staff who are, who are or will become carers and to make the most of the talents that carers can bring to the workforce?
Thank you, Mrs Goodwin. Any others? Mrs Mooney?
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you as well, Mrs Goodwin, for your feedback and additional question. I too have read the article this morning on the news and was very concerned to hear about the number of people in employment who are also fulfilling caring roles and responsibilities are actually having to leave their employment. With regards to your additional question, I think the best that I can say at the moment is I think I can discuss that with the leader and come back to you with a formal written response, if that would be okay.
Thank you. Mr Button, question three, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you, Chairman. I have a, I thank Mrs Alves for her very thoughtful response. I will be writing to her and to Mrs Lewis separately about the disturbing outcomes of the internal audit into the finance function in children's services.
Thank you. Question four, Mr Essex, do you have a supplementary?
I'd like to thank-
Sorry, before you answer, anyone else? Thank you, go ahead, Mr Essex.
I'd like to thank the cabinet member for his response. Please, could you confirm if next week's relaunch of the Surrey Energy and Sustainability Partnership will be in public, publicised publicly and will include an agreement on what our targets for environmental sustainability in Surrey are, as it's now a long time since we agreed the policy in two thousand and seventeen, which said that for most of the targets, that target setting was in progress.
Yes, thank you for the question, thank you for the supplementary. I think it is true to say this council takes environmental issues very seriously, as we've demonstrated several times over the course of the last year. The document you refer to, I must admit, I dusted off when I read your comments and realised that perhaps we should have done a little bit more in making sure those targets were more robust and I've spoken to service to actually put that in place. As for your supplementary question, whether it's in private or public, I haven't got the answer to that, but what I will say is I will let you know that later today.
Thank you, Mr Goodman. Question five, Mr Evans, any supplementary?
Thank you very much and can I thank the cabinet member for his response, because I'm encouraged by that and the, the fact that the, there's a dynamic risk assessment taking place with emergency response for, for two hours. I wonder, is the cabinet member, has he, does he know how many of the fifty thousand repaired, which is about a thousand a week, actually need to be done again? But may I also, Chair, crave your indulgence, because I know you like me to keep, to keep to the point. Last, last Friday, I set off to work early for my usual twenty-five minute commute to work, but due to the snow conditions, this took longer than usual. Instead of twenty-five minutes, it took me twenty-eight minutes to get to work. And I wonder through you, whether it'd be possible or through the cabinet member for him to thank the members of Surrey County Council staff who had obviously been out all night clearing the roads and allowed, and instead of me having a snow day, just an extra three minutes to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, and especially, Mr Evans, as you're one of my constituents, that's very important to me too. Thank you, Mr Furness.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, I think we all congratulate the crews, because they were out pretty much twenty-four hours in very difficult conditions, so they did a very good job indeed. All I can say is if you want the precise figures, I'll, I'll find that out and send it on to you, but what I can assure you of is that every pothole has a two-year warranty, they are photographed and if there is an issue, it goes back at their cost. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Furness. Question six, Mrs Goodwin, do you have a supplementary?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Question seven, Mr Essex, do you have a supplementary?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to thank the cabinet member for the response and recycle my first question if I'm allowed to. Please, could you confirm if Surrey is committed to meet the ambition in the government's Surrey cycling and walking strategy here in Surrey and if so, whether Surrey, whether cycling is one of the service areas of the council that is currently subject to a recruitment freeze, because we've just lost our main cycling officer to shop share of all places.
Anyone else? Mr Goodman?
Well, as for the, the last part of the question, all I can say is that the services look at each person that leaves the council for various reasons and decide the appropriate person to recruit. What I can say to you is that maybe they will reframe that role and change it, but what I can absolutely confirm, we are committed to rec, to cycling in Surrey. You've got some fantastic examples at Woken, Brookwood, Yule West and Wharton and Hazelmeir, some real good examples of what good cycling is. But also, it's not all about cycling. You mentioned earlier about the carbon issue, but what you failed to mention was actually only two weeks ago in Guildford, when that, Furness, we actually had the first electric buses operating and parking right in Surrey. So to me, it's a balance between all these different forms of getting people to, to their place of work or for social. It's not just about cycling, it's also about buses and traffic as well.
Thank you, Mr Goodman. Question eight, Mrs Goodwin, do you have a supplementary?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Question nine, Mr Essex, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, I'd like to thank the cabinet member for her answer. Just like to refer back to October's cabinet papers, where Julian Wayne was listed as programme director, responsible for developing Surrey's asset and place strategy and was subsequently confirmed in the press as a member of contract staff, but does not appear here in the list of interim directors. Would the cabinet member please confirm if Julian Wayne is still employed as a director by Surrey County Council on an interim basis and agree with me potentially, I'll give the option, whether we should, if, when we employ contract staff at such high positions, we should make that clear publicly when we publish papers which are said to be printed in their name. Thanks.
Thank you. Care to respond?
Thank you very much for that question. I'd like to confirm that he's not a director, so that's why his name has not appeared on that list. It is on. He, he is, he is not a director and that's why his name does not appear on that list.
Yes, you can come back, Mr Essex.
We've declared publicly that he's a programme director, so we've given him the title director when we've communicated to the public as to what his role is. So I'm presuming if we tell the public he's a director, he's probably going to be a director.
Thanks, Mr Essex, and I'll ask the cabinet member to take that one away separately in reply. That's the end of members' question time, thank you. We move on to item eight, statements by members, and I've received notice of a statement from Jan Mason. Mrs Mason, you've got two minutes to make your statement, which will be put without discussion or reply. Do go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. I hope you can hear me. I don't often make statements, but when I do, it's because it's serious and that's why we're here. I've been a member here for eighteen years, so I do know my area of West Yule intensely, very few footpaths I do not know of. Anyway, my argument here and my, my real concern, and it comes back in by other people, is that we have two of the most, in my division, two of the most densely populated and deprived areas in the county. It's always been so, we've been in the top ten as long as I've been here, namely the Long Mede Estate and the Waters Edge Estate. On the Waters Edge Estate, we have a centre called The Edge, built about twenty-two years ago by this county, very well done, well thought of, delivered youth services. However, however, in the last seven months, no youth service has been delivered out of this building. The reason being, we are told now, is that we did have a period of eighteen months where it was closed for refurbishment, security work being carried out there, which was all fine. We then got back into the swing of it, thinking, great, we're now delivering to this really needy area some services. But hey ho, last year, Surrey go in for another, what I call, reorganisation, which some of the youth workers, talented I might add, decided, quite rightly I feel in some cases, to say, enough's enough, I'm leaving, and they took redundancy. Okay, so that's what they've done. We are, they're then left in the whole of a borough with one manager, three part-time staff. It is not good enough for an area which has low income, one of the lowest car ownerships and high social housing to have nothing. I don't want to hear you tell me, oh, we'll go to the homes of children with families. That's a good thing, but this is having the youngsters off the street, they have no gardens, they're in flats, hundreds of flats. So I want them off of the streets and I want to know at some stage, when on earth is this council, be it, I know it's Conservative-controlled and it's not my fault they are, but at the end of the day, they need to get a grip of this and decide what they're doing for a much needed area. We are so upset, I don't think I've known so many complaints regarding the lack of service for over eighteen months. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Mason, for your statement. Item nine, appointment of interim monitoring officer. I call the leader to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, this is to confirm, hopefully, the appointment of an interim monitoring officer, Geoff Wild, I mentioned him earlier. Geoff was at some point in his career, the, held that same role at Kent County Council and most recently at, in Cornwall, so is, is well experienced. So the recommendation is to appoint Geoff as the interim monitoring officer from today.
Thank you, Leader. Unless there's any other comments, it's recommended that Geoff Wild be appointed as this interim monitoring officer from the date of this meeting, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item ten, report of the cabinet, the papers for this item are included in the main agenda on page two four nine and in the second supplementary agenda circulated last week on page five. I call the leader to present the reports of the meeting of the cabinet, held on eighteenth December twenty eighteen and twenty-ninth January twenty nineteen. Leader?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I beg to move the reports of the cabinet, meetings held on the eighteenth of December and twenty-ninth of January two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, Leader. I'll call the paragraph separately, just in case there's comment. Paragraph A, Mr Kingston.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I want to comment on the local government, on the report or the incident itself, but I see that the leader of the council extended his apologies and that is good. And then there is a comment at the end, that the, that in the LGO reports will be sent to the relevant cabinet member in order that they can keep track of it. My problem is that for a long time, under the old regime, it did seem to me that cabinet members were quite happy to take on a role, but when things got tough or when things got bad, they almost disassociated from, themselves from the consequences. We had that in, in the previous regime over a report on the educate, sorry, on the children's services and we have indeed an inspection report on the fire and rescue services. I've heard a lot of comment from the cabinet member on that, but not one statement that it was under her watch and she might actually have some responsibility for what was not done. The fact that the leader now is saying that in this particular case, no one is taking responsibility, no one picked this up as a cabinet member, I think is worrying, but it is a significant point that the county councillor has picked it up and said it will be picked up. I do hope, under this new regime that we have at the council, not only will cabinet members assume responsibility, but they will also take responsibility for what goes on and their portfolios. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Kingston. Leader?
Thank you, Chairman. And indeed, it was my, my own recommendation to add on the, on the fourth, the fourth item, that it, it's, I mean, it's primarily to deal with procedural failures, so it is, it is, I hope that by notifying the cabinet member when there is an ombudsman referral, that they will track that through to make sure that these failures here aren't repeated and indeed also beyond that, to, to understand how that referral has come about and to take whatever steps necessary to prevent any further recurrence.
Thank you, Leader. So moving on to recommendations on policy framework documents, I call paragraph B. Comments? No. So the cabinet recommends that the county council approves recommendations one to seven inclusive on the report for this item and will show by show of hands and using the voting system, all in favour, please indicate. I'm not minded to invite comment on this paragraph, which was dealt with under the budget report on item six, unless anyone desperately wants to say anything. Thank you. I call paragraph D. Paragraph E. So the motion is that the report, the meetings of the cabinet held on eighteenth December twenty eighteen and twenty ninth January twenty nineteen be adopted, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item eleven, members, it's recommended that the council notes the report of the Member Conduct Panel of thirtieth November twenty eighteen, are we agreed?
Agreed.
And item twelve, cabinet minutes, I've not received any notifications of the minutes have been received, so meeting ends at twelve noon.